Good evening. It is now seven o'clock. I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education regular session to order. Please help me welcome the Edwards Middle School Patriots and Dr. Tasha Williams, Principal of Edwards Middle School to introduce our inspirational speaker. Come on forward. Welcome. This is Mighty Folds and I'm going to let her chorus director introduce her.
Hello, my name is Lindsay Ferris and I'm the Core Director at Edwards Middle School. This is Mighty Fold, she's an eighth grade chorus member. And our theme this year is Rise Up. And tonight she's going to sing a song in honor of our theme.
You're broken down and tired of living life on a miracle road. And you can find a fighter. But I sit in you, we gonna walk it out and move mountains. We gonna walk it out and move mountains. And I'll rise up. I'll rise like the day. I'll rise up. I'll rise unafraid. I'll rise up. And I'll do it a thousand times again. For you. For you. For you. For you. All we need, all we need is hope. And for that we have each other. And for that we have each other. And we will rise, we will rise then. We will rise. We'll rise. I'll rise up. Rise like the day. I'll rise up. In spite of the day. I will rise a thousand times again.
Please remain standing and join us to recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was amazing. Oh my gosh, you touched my heart. Beautiful voice. So very proud of you and I received that message too. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second, Akeeta Palmer.
A motion has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Palmer. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries six seventy zero. Next, we welcome Dr. Corey Williams, Principal of and CEO of Rockdale Career Academy to provide the school presentation. Welcome, Dr. Corey Williams.
Good afternoon, Dr. Oates, Madam Board Chairwoman and Board Members. I'm Dr. Corey Williams, the Principal and CEO of the Rockdale Career Academy. And I'm excited to share all the amazing things that RCA has been doing over the past year. So, I want to first start off with our why. Our students are the reason we come to work every day. We want to inspire our students so that our students could go out and make a living, make a life, then make a difference in our district. Next, I want to show a short video of us interviewing teachers and students about RCA.
One thing I love about RCA is how we love each other. We're a family community for both students, administration, and staff.
One thing that I absolutely love about RCA is the climate. It's absolutely declining. Teachers, administrative staff, wonderful. And it gives us the ability to be who we need to be.
Hey y'all, my name is Chloe and what I like about RCA is how loving and caring the teachers are and just learning new things. Like, I'm in early childhood, so I get to be with the kids and that's what I like most about RCA.
Hi, my name is Melanie. I take graphic design and interior design. And one thing I like about the teachers are they're all nice and friendly.
And the thing I love about RCA is the relevant experience our students leave with and the culture of relationships that we've established between our students and instructors. I could not imagine working anywhere else.
Hi, my name is Damian and I'm in the graphic design pathway. One thing I like about the RCA teachers is that they actually care about what your passion is and what you want to do in the school.
My name is Benjamin Mesa. My pathway is construction. And one thing that I like about RCA teachers is that they're more communicative. And as well, you know, I enjoy being in their class. They are, they're really nice.
Hi, my name is Eddie Summer. I'm one of the Assistant Principals here at Rockdale Career Academy. I have been at RCA for 11 years. This is actually my 11th year. And what I love about RCA is the family atmosphere and the things that we do to help support our students in or getting them ready for college and career.
Hi, my name is Chris Mays. I'm currently an Assistant Principal at RCA. This is my 17th year here. And the thing that I love most about RCA is that we are able to really find an educational niche for so many of our students. Whether it be the automotive program or culinary program, or participating in work-based learning or dual enrollment.
And one of the best things about working at RCA is a camaraderie. Everyone here is a family. We work together and our common goal is to ensure that our students experience success.
What I love about Rockdale Career Academy is the sense of innovation throughout every single hall. And that we're called to be here. We're looking for the gold in every student. We want to find out what they're good at because they're good at so many different things. And we want to find ways to help them to succeed and to become amazing people and to have the lives that they want to have.
So I just want to start off with that video to talk about RCA and go into our vision. Our vision at RCA is to develop a well-rounded, confident, responsible, and accountable students who aspire to achieve their full potential in a college or a career field. And we believe in equity of opportunity. We believe that no matter our student's background, ability level, or economic situation, we want to make sure we provide the opportunity at RCA to give them the skills they need if they want to go to college or straight into a career field. So how do we do this? What is our mission? What do we do every day? We don't start off saying that, hey, we want a school of excellence. The first thing we want to do is build our people. Our people and our teachers are the biggest effect on student learning. So we start about building our people, which is our teachers and our students. Next, the people build a culture in the school. And once you have that culture, the culture builds the school. And today I want to talk about our motto for this year, which is work harder and smarter. And in business world, we talk about ROI, the return on investment. I'm going to talk about what have we invested into our students and our teachers this year? And when we break down ROI, we're going to reflect on the things that we've done last year, some of the opportunities we are providing our students this year, and then also look at some of the innovative practices we're implementing at RCA. So first, I want to talk about a few numbers and talk about academic success. You see eighty-two percent and you see ninety-one percent. Eighty-two percent is the passing rate on our end-of-pathway assessments, which is the highest in RCA history. For end-of-pathway assessments are national and state industry certifications and occupational assessments that measure the level of technical skill attainment for career pathway completers. And when you look on the right, the ninety-one percent is the retention rate. At RCA, because we don't have summer school, many of our students can't make up on credits during the summer, so they have to go back to their home school. Based on different practices that we implemented as making sure we shore up those admin, teacher, and teacher-students relationships and building that culture, tier-one professional development with our directors in the school, responsive intervention strategies, we've kept ninety-one percent of our students and that's up from seventy-nine percent the year before. Next, we want to talk about recruitment. RCA wants to go into the community, into our schools, and start recruiting. The first two pictures you see is that we had a career day at Davis Middle School last year and we're going to expand that to all the middle schools where we're going to have career days. So our rising freshmen, which are our current eighth graders, have the opportunity to see different demos during lunch of the different career pathways at RCA. You can see all the home schools there. We're going to be tailgating at some of the football games as well, giving away free hot dogs and hamburgers. And again, reaching out to some of those freshmen so they understand RCA. And also, you can see we have a lot more promotional materials as all of you've gotten. We've created some brochures, some flyers, to really get our name out there in the community because the community knows who RCA is, but I want them to create that partnership and that understanding so we can make sure our kids go out into the workforce and have a job when they graduate. Next, another thing that we did was we named all of our hallways for the home schools. So again, it's that partnership and integration with the home schools to know that we are a part of the schools and not a part from them. So I really liked it and the kids actually came up with this idea with the high school counselors. Next, for the achievements, we won the regional competition for baking and pastry for SCC LA. We won first place for Law and Justice Tactical Team for Skills USA. We took some of our students in our Law and Justice pathway to New York to see the 911 Memorial. It was a definitely emotional time for our students and they even talked to a fire chief that was actually there at ground zero and survived. And then lastly, we had a job fair last year. We had twenty-nine businesses come and interview fifty-nine kids. And we have twenty kids that actually got offered jobs at the school. So we're going to continue our job fair. And again, that's reaching out to our businesses to hire RCA students when they graduate. The opportunities that we're offering, we added AP African-American Studies, the AP Seminar at RCA. We also expanded dual enrollment by adding another dual enrollment teacher. So now we have three dual enrollment teachers on staff. We added a mathematics teacher and we expanded welding. Welding is one of our booming career pathways where we had ten welding bays and we upped it to eighteen welding bays. Thank you so much, Phil, for helping me out, getting the funds to do that. And a lot of our students are a part of the accelerated career program to where they may be behind on their studies. But if they take welding and dual enrollment at the same time, they're able to catch up and graduate with a certification from the state in welding and they go right into the career field making fifty to sixty thousand dollars as junior welders. So we really want to expand and invest in the infrastructure. Next, we talk about some of the partnerships quickly. We partnered with Crete C to develop an authority who's also given us a lot of money to help out with welding and also Conyers, Rockdale Chamber of Commerce. We also got awarded a five thousand dollar grant. So our culinary and agriculture science pathways will be grown in a community garden. This five dollar grant will be used not only to build the garden, but to have classes for the community to teach them about access to healthy food. Next, beyond the curriculum, we're having something this year called For Real Fridays. These are adult one-on-one seminars to talk about the things that students need to do when they go out to the workforce. We're going to be talking about credit card and debt, how the budget, legal pitfalls, mental health and wellness, how to apply for a job or interview. So it's again, going beyond the curriculum and a teacher did this in their classroom last year and we want to offer that to all the students there. So we'll be having outside speakers come in and speak to our students about what do they need to prepare for when they go out into the workforce. Next, with our innovation, I'm proud to announce we added a barbering pathway here at RCA. We partnered with the Atlanta Barber Institute to bring the pathway to RCA. We have two cohorts of students with a total of forty-five students in the program. When the students graduate after three years, they'll have their master barber license and they'll be able to go work out into the field. Any student that graduates with their master barber license, we're going to pay for them to get their business license and get their LLC as well. Next, we have partnering with Georgia Piedmont Technical College with their electric vehicle program. Right now, they are set to be the first college in Georgia to have an EV mechanic program. And RCA looks to be the first school to offer this training and coursework to our third-year automotive students. We are a year out from this venture, but we're partnering with GPTC to make sure that this happens and we're the first school to offer that program. Next thing we're doing is RCA has been selected in cohort of non-collegial and career academies to pursue a Georgia STEM certification. So, why STEM? Hearing feedback from Crete C, the Development Authority, and Conyers, Rockdale Chamber of Commerce, rock manufacturing is a growing sector in Rockdale. More importantly, smart manufacturing and the growth of the semiconductor industry is making its way to Georgia and Rockdale. Therefore, we're looking to have a manufacturing pathway certified as a STEM program at RCA, which will touch on automation, artificial intelligence, and also students have access to dual enrollment classes in the math and sciences. And this is a two-to-three-year process to get that STEM certification. Next, far as expanding pathways, we're kind of full of RCA. So we always want to talk about electricians and also fire cadets and fire academies. So we partnered with these two companies and they're training adults after school at our school after school. And for our students, they have the opportunity to matriculate into that program when they graduate. So there were reserved spots for RCA students when they graduate if they want to become electricians or want to be a part of the fire cadet program. So this is again, providing opportunities for our students on campus and it's a good avenue for them to recruit our seniors that want to be electricians or be a firefighter. And lastly, I want to thank our teachers. Those are the ones that make this school build and run. Those are the reason why I come every day because I love pouring into them. They pour into me and I couldn't do this job without them and my Assistant Principals. Thank you so much and we have more to report at RCA. It's an amazing place to be. It's my second year as a principal and I love my job and I love what I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Very nice. And I'm just happy that I have had the opportunity to see your work firsthand. Excellent, great things are going on at Rockdale Career Academy. All right, do we have any visitors tonight? We have visitors, but you didn't sign up to say anything. Welcome. I'm glad to see you guys here tonight. There are no visitors who would like to address the board. I would like to turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Oates.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman, Vice Chairwoman, our Board Members, our Executive and Senior Cabinet Members. And I'm very excited.
For one moment, we didn't adopt the agenda?
Okay, well, thank you for reminding us. We gotta do that.
And I apologize.
Not a problem, not a problem. Okay, let's back it up. Okay. Let's see.
We did adopt the agenda.
I think you were sleeping over there, honey. Look at here, look at here, look at here, look at here now. Now, 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 point of order. Order. Okay, let's keep it moving. We move so fast, honey, it's time.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, hey, we're a team. We gonna make the dream work tonight. All right, now, let's get back, back, back on, on, on schedule here.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You have any updates for us?
Well, before we get to updates later, we have our Assistant Superintendents about to take the podium to report on our Georgia Milestones Assessment System overview for 2023. And I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the fact that we have most of our principals here. And I'm so grateful for your coming out to stand firm as we look at the data. And, and let me just say this, I think I'm preaching to the choir when I say this to you, but for the benefit of others, you guys are already so deep into that data and looking at new data that you're creating through our interim STAR assessment as we're working on those areas that have been identified for continuous improvement. But that being said, we also have some areas, some bright spots that we want to talk about and trumpet as well. So I'll yield to our Assistant Superintendent, Madam Chairwoman.
Welcome.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Duncan. Superintendent Oates, Board Members, Cabinets, and guests. This evening I bring you greetings on behalf of the Office of Accountability and School Performance. I'm Dr. Nadine Campbell. And with me this evening, I have Doctors McLean and Freeman, Ms. Hunter, and Dr. Oates stole my thunder because I was going to acknowledge that we have all of our wonderful principals here with us this evening. As Dr. Oates shared, we would like to share the results of the Spring 2023 Georgia Milestones with an emphasis on our intervention and enrichment and instructional plans for the 23-24 school year. At the elementary level, reading is an area where we can celebrate some growth. At the third grade, we saw an increase of one percentage point. Our students performing at or above grade level with our first administration. However, once our students retested, that grew to a six percent increase. At the fourth grade level, we did not see an increase in our percentage of students performing at or above grade level. However, we did remain steady in that grade level. And at the fifth grade, we also saw an increase. With our first administration, we had an increase of one percent. But once we, our students were able to retest, we did see an increase to seven percentage points from the year before. ELA and math are growth opportunities for elementary schools. In ELA, our grades three through fifth, they showed a decrease in the percentage of students performing at levels two through four. For our highest proficiency bands, the bands where we really want our students to perform and show that performance, we can see that for third grade, that remained the same. For our fourth grade scholars, we saw a slight decrease. But for our fifth grade students, we did see an increase in the percentage of students who are performing at proficient and are distinguished levels. In the area of math, as I said again, that is an area for us at the elementary level that we do understand and realize that we have some work to do. In grades three and four, we showed a decrease in the percentage of students performing at levels two through four. Our fifth grade showed an increase of one percent with our first administration. But once our students were able to retest, that increased to a thirteen percentage point increase from the year prior. And we are very excited about that work that our fifth grade teachers and students put in. Just as a reminder for our guests and our Board Members, fifth grade is the only grade level that tests science in elementary. And when we look at a comparison of our data from 22-23, we did see a decrease in levels two and four, our performance. But we did see an increase in performance at the highest proficiency bands. One of the things that we do know is that our schools have worked diligently to not only focus on our Level One and Two students, but we also have worked to set goals for levels three and four. And in doing so, we were able to see slight increases in those areas. We just know that we still have a lot of work to do in moving our Level Two students up to the proficiency band.
Good evening. This slide highlights some of the bright spots from the Spring 2023 data. As Dr. Campbell already mentioned, reading is a bright spot for us. You will see that the percent of students performing at or above grade level for third grade and for fifth grade increased from Spring 22 to Spring 23. Also, we would like to highlight that the percentage of our students in fifth grade performing at levels two through four increased as well. In science, three schools outperformed the state and metro research at proficient and above levels. And as Dr. Campbell mentioned, proficient and above is what we're really striving for. So we're really excited that three of our schools did outperform the state and metro research. While we're able to recognize and celebrate some district-level and school-level bright spots in the Spring 23 data, we realize that there is still work to be done. It is our goal to increase the number of students who perform at proficient levels and above. School-level administrators and school-based teams have analyzed their Georgia milestone data and use it along with other data sources to set school improvement goals and to inform their school improvement plans and instructional next step. This slide highlights some of the new instructional supports for this 23-24 school year. There is a minimum of one hundred and twenty minutes of literacy instruction included that includes reading, writing, and language arts at the elementary level. While in the past years, schools have allocated an extended block of instructional time for literacy, we do realize that our students are not performing as well as they need to in writing. So schools have now specified time for writing instruction and specified time for phonics instruction within that literacy block to make sure that it is occurring daily. We have also added additional professional learning support for our new principals. Also, changes have been made to the elementary principals' POC structures to include using the RCPS data protocol to analyze interim STAR data. Increasing student learning achievement and growth is goal area number two of the RCPS strategic plan. The focus on moving students to higher levels of performance is a district-wide goal. While I highlighted some new changes, I would like to say that our department, along with other departments, are working to support schools to achieve this goal. The Teaching and Learning Department has scheduled meetings with all of our schools to discuss their data and their school improvement goals and to determine what supports are needed. They also continue to provide professional learning for teachers and school administrators to support literacy and math instruction along with other professional development areas. Not only do schools use our Georgia milestone data to determine students' readiness levels, but they will also analyze STAR screeners and grade-level coming assessments, which give real-time data to determine students' knowledge of content, and they will plan accordingly. This slide shows some instructional support that will be, that will be provided at the elementary level. Schools have safety net funds to use to provide additional supports for students. Principals and their school teams analyze data to determine what additional supports are needed. Some of the safety nets will include targeted instruction for subgroups such as our English learners, our gifted students, our students with disabilities. Schools plan to use their safety net funds to provide small group tutorial programs such as, that may occur after school or during Saturday school. All schools also have an intervention and enrichment, we call it the IE block, built into their master schedule. The purpose of the IE block is to provide small group differentiated instruction in reading and math for all of our students during the school day. We know that although we offer after-school programs and Saturday school programs, not all students are able to come. So we want to make sure that we have that time built in during the school day. So teachers analyze their students' data and they create lesson plans daily for small group instruction that is designed to target skills of concern for those students who have not shown mastery. But for those students who have shown mastery, they design instructions so that they can enrich those students' skills. We want to make sure not only are we providing the grade-level content, but we're also providing time to meet the students where they are and close some gaps. Thank you for allowing us to summarize the elementary data and to talk to you a little bit about some of the instructional supports. At this time, Ms. Hunster will come to share the information from middle schools.
Good afternoon, well, good evening. I'm Kimberly Hunter. I work with our middle schools and I'm going to start with our reading and ELA data as far as how we did six through eight on our milestones. In sixth grade, we saw a slight decrease in the reading milestone. In seventh grade, we saw an increase of two percent. And in eighth grade, we saw an initial increase of one percent, but with retest data, it was a six percent increase. ELA, which is an area of focus for us when it actually pertains to the writing piece of this, that is holistically where we're unpacking in our schools and I'll go into that with our instructional supports. In sixth grade, we saw an increase, saw a decrease of two percentage points as far as the levels two through four. And the levels three through four, which is our highest point of proficiency, we did hold steady there. In seventh grade, we saw a slight decrease of two percentage points. And our level three through four, we stayed the same. In eighth grade, we held steady at our levels two through four, but we did see a slight decrease of three percent in our distinguished level. Through math, for sixth grade, for levels two through four, we saw an increase of three percentage points. And our proficiency level, we saw an increase of one percentage point. In seventh grade, we held steady for levels two through four. In eighth, excuse me, in seventh grade for levels three through four, we saw an increase of two percent. I will say in eighth grade, initially, we saw a decrease of two percent going from seventy, from seventy-one. Well, I won't give enough, I'll just say it decreased by two percent. But with retest, it was an eight percent increase, which we were very happy about. And then in levels three through four, we still saw the decrease of six percent. Eighth grade also does assessment in science and social studies. And our high school physical science, we saw an increase of two percent in levels three through four, two through four. And our high school physical science, we saw an increase of two percent in levels three through fours, two through four. We saw an increase of two percent in levels three through four. In eighth grade science, we saw a decrease of four percent and a seven percent decrease in levels three through four. In eighth grade social studies, you also saw a decrease of three percent and a decrease of two percent um for levels three and four. When we look at highlights, what's been tried and true for middle school here is that once they're in eighth grade, they've been with us for three years, we are able to start exceeding the state at in many different indicators. Um what we're focused on in full transparency is getting this to happen in all three of our grade levels. Well, what I want to highlight is that in eighth grade, reading, our reading district pass rate exceeded M RISA and the state's pass rate. In eighth grade, ELA district percent of levels two through four exceeded exceeded our M RISA and state's percent of levels two through four. Our Carnegie Physical Science District percent of levels two through four exceeded M RISA and state's percent of two through four. In eighth grade science, district percent of two through four exceeded M RISA, and we matched the states. With retest, you know, the eighth grade math and district percents of two through four exceeded state's perform percent of levels two through four. And cohort data, cohort data means comparing students who were in sixth grade to how they did with proficiency two through four. Um in seventh grade, the same apples to apple. Going from sixth to seventh grade, we saw an increase in levels two through four. And going from seventh to eighth grade, the same students we saw increase in two through four across the district. With that being said, we have a lot of next steps. We have some things we've always had in place, and we've added additional steps as well. We will continue to utilize our intervention block to address prerequisite skills and address areas of remediation and those in need of acceleration. After-school and Saturday school uh tutorial will be offered. Some schools do allow for virtual tutoring based on the availability of staff to provide it. We um three or four of our schools went to the P L C Summer Institute to recalibrate the way we're looking at, we're collaborating, we're providing rigor, we're planning, we're assessing student data and being results-oriented. Um we actually, at the middle school level, in our Math Connections classes, we are all using the resource of Success Maker, which is a uh progress monitoring tool that provides interventions. And to laugh at collaboration amongst all four schools, we all, each school individually purchased for us to have further collaboration. All of our schools have reading connection classes for reading support. We're going to continue to analyze cohort data. We know we say seventh grade to seventh grade are two different sets of children, but while they're with us, we're seeing, are you growing as you're reticulating through middle school? So we're going to do that. Our integration of writing in all content areas, um we don't, you know, ELA teachers are not the only ones responsible for writing. It should be integrated in all core content and even the connection classes. We write in everything we do. Our literacy plans will incorporate more writing in areas of science and social studies. On the milestone, students have opportunity to write, but it's on the content of science and social studies, so we're going to incorporate that more in our daily lessons. And targeted interventions to address student group or subgroup performance. That may be our ESAR, our special education. Um sometimes it's uh our Hispanic subgroup. We would just make sure that all of our students are making adequate progress and exceeding when um at all levels. All middle schools have local school instructional coaches utilized for supporting induction-level teachers and support for veteran teachers. Instructional coaches provide professional learning, collaborate with content teachers, model lessons, and provide feedback for continuous improvement. So that concludes the middle school data. I will now turn it over to Dr.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm pleased to present to you the high school end-of-course exams for spring twenty-twenty-three. I do want to start, I'm clicking. I do want to start with the uh district snapshot uh for results for high school E O Cs. The Georgia Department of Education has four E O C exams that they require of all high schools. American Lit, which is composed of reading and writing, uh coordinate algebra, biology, and U S history. I have for you on this graph district results for over the past three years. The Georgia Department of Education considers the year twenty-twenty-one, which is the first bar graph that you see is the deep burnt orange. Uh and the first one is for uh American Lit is during the pandemic data. They define years twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three as post-pandemic. And so you see the representation there. The first chart of American Lit, you see that is the area that we decreased in last year. And we'll talk more about that as we move forward. Coordinate algebra, we increased. Biology, we increased as a district. And U S history, we increased as a district. I'd now like to talk with you about a summarization of our results from spring of twenty-twenty-two until our most recent exam in the spring of twenty-twenty-three. You can see here, beginning with coordinate algebra, we show first the one-point-three percent increase at proficient and distinguished levels, and then an increase of four-point-four percent in developing and above. You see similar in biology with a four percent increase in proficient and above and five-point-seven increase in developing and above. American Lit, again, is our area of focus and concern. We saw an eight, an eight-point-nine percent decrease at the proficient or above levels and above levels and four percent decrease at the developing and above levels. In U S history, we saw a slight increase in proficient and above and with zero-point-five percent. And then an increase of five-point-six percent in developing and above levels. And so I look forward to, in the future, bringing you more highlights. But tonight's highlight really is improvement year over year for three out of four E O C exams. Last year, when I presented, I spoke to you about our general overview plan. And then I went into detail for each one of the elements. This year, I'll share with you those things that are newer, but I wanted to bring your attention back to our plan in high school, the overall plan. First of all, we ensure rigorous, engaging tier-one instruction. Then we're going to work with our data. Then we're going to find the true why as to why students are either performing or not performing. For example, if we say our students didn't perform well, well, it's because they don't come to school. If they come, don't come to school, how can we teach them? Well, we want to look deeper than that. Why is the student not coming to school? And figure out how to intervene in the way that's going to make this the most positive change. We'll also determine the level of support needed. Our students are not monolithic. Our students are multifaceted, and all of them don't need the same interventions. And so we would like to tier those interventions based on specifically what each student needs and then focus on fidelity. Do what we say we're going to do. Do it pervas- pervasively and consistently. Our plan for instructional support for this year continues to focus on effective tier-one teaching. And as we talked about earlier, with American Lit being the content area that we decreased in, we are going to focus more on literacy and composition, and we'll do that in several ways. Uh we've used Read One Eighty and Star before. Those are great tools for us. But we also want to focus more on using vocabulary in context and not in isolation. And reading composite comprehension is essential. We also want to inspire a love of learning for reading in our students. And in order to do that, we know we have to have high-interest reading and give students an opportunity to do that reading during the school day. We also want to focus on writing. Writing is essential for our students. You do it in every day, in every facet of life. Writing across the curriculum is incredibly important. Also conferencing with students, that students conferencing with the teacher and with one another to talk about writing. So the fear of writing begins to go away. And then inspiring composi- composition competent uh confidence by allowing students to really delve into those things that are relevant to their lives as they write, not just content, something that they're close to. Also, continuing with the effective tier-one uh teaching, we did notice in our data there was a decrease in some areas for those students in the distinguished category. So we know we need to have more of a balance focusing on ensuring that the students that do score in the proficient and distinguished levels are continuing to grow. And so that will be our uh one of our uh fokai as well. Avid advancement via individual determination is not new to this district, but we're re-engaging in Avid. This summer, with the help of teaching and learning, we were able to send all three traditional high school teams to act, to the Avid Summit in June, where they were trained on the Avid principles. Using Avid is a research-based uh program that has proven, when done with fidelity, students improve at all levels. Avid focuses on equity, teacher effectiveness, leadership, and student learning, taking control of of their learning. We also continue to work with professional learning communities. With that, I think we all know about the data and the things that go on in there. But collaborative lesson planning, not just with each other, but with administrators. So you have real-time feedback on the plans teachers are are going to deliver that's not siloed. So the teachers do the plan and then you separately um write feedback to them. Let's be in the room and let's share that feedback and have a discussion and dialogue about the lesson. We continue to use the gradual release of responsibility framework, which is a scaffolded framework that helps students understand the flow of the lesson. And so uh we use the four-part, the I do, which is the teacher delivering a mini lesson, modeling those sort of things, the we do it together, where the teachers and the students work together. And then the you do it together, where the students are collaborating together, and then the final, you do it. So so uh each student has confidence in what they've learned by the end of the lesson. We also offer supports uh including assessment preparation, which is more than students just knowing how to use a test ticket. All of our tests at high school are electronic. And so we have to make sure that the students know what tools are a- are available for each content and then how to apply those tools effectively. So we began working on that last year and will continue this year. Student efficacy and agency is always important. Helping students believe in themselves, which is student efficacy, and helping students understand how to advocate for themselves and others, which is student agency. And we work intentionally on that. This year, as we focus on enrichment for our students who typically score in the proficient, high-proficient or distinguished levels, we're offering or we're we're requiring dual enrollment support. So periodically, these students in our dual enrollment programs will meet uh with uh I think Tanya Cobb, our counselor, as well as Dr. Williams has a part of his team, which will meet with them, see if they need any support, and also check those grades. Uh we'll continue with our tutoring that we've discussed before. Uh in instructional support, as we continue, uh talking about effective teachers. Let's see, did I go back? Okay, uh finally, we'll talk about healthy school cultures and climates. That's essential, not just positive, but healthy. So children really do grow into adults who are able to serve well in their communities. With healthy school cultures, we have to make sure that we're intentional about master scheduling. That is, a student, we're on the four-by-four A B block. And so those students who might be in math support uh with four classes, they might take their regular math and then math support. That's half a day of math. So wherever possible, we try to prevent that. Uh we want students to have a balanced schedule so that they can enjoy their day. In addition to that, we want to have balance in the schedule for our teachers. We do know that especially in teaching writing and those sorts of skills that are labor-intensive for the teachers, the the we, limiting class size as much as possible is it it helps with that. So we try to maintain a twenty-five to twenty-seven degree ratio. Uh also, opportunities encouraging our students, parents, faculty, and staff uh to greed, increase engagement and opportunities to give input uh and feedback. Encouraging them to join school council, P T S A, to participate in booster clubs and to also have an open-door pro- uh an open-door policy for for our families, as well as take feedback at events and with specific surveys. Classroom organization and general facilities, very important. We want our facilities to reflect the excellence that we nurture in our students. And so we're really focusing on inside the classroom, inside the building, and outside as well. And then balancing accountability with support and encouragement. There has to be joy in the journey. Our teachers are working very hard. Our families are working hard. Our students and administrators are working hard. So helping them stay accountable, understand what the expectation is, and support that expecta- expectation, but also to ensure that our buildings are places filled with joy. And that is the last slide. And we'll be prepared to take any questions.
I have a few.
Absolutely.
Um I want to go back to the beginning of the presentation, so it may be maybe beneficial for Dr. Campbell and Dr. McLean um to come up. The very first slide, the elementary milestones comparison data, uh school year twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. There are references to increases and decreases. What there is not is the starting point. Could anybody elaborate on what the starting point for the increase and decrease in reading, ELA, and math was? I'm going to stop you right there to break that down a little bit for people who may not be as familiar as uh as you ladies are. Um when you say two through four, that's going to be uh developing proficient distinguished learners. And you're using levels two, three, and four interchangeably with those two distinctions, correct? So the the level two would be a developing learner, a level three proficient, and level four distinguished. Uh beginning learner uh would be a level one. And taking the test, a a student who who failed, did not pass, they would be a developing, or a, excuse me, a beginning learner, correct? The the goal, obviously, is for mastery of the content. We want all of our students to proficient or optimally at distinguished, but at least proficient, correct? So developing, uh the developing learner, would you agree with me that those students, they're going to need additional support going to the next level? They haven't mastered the content area for that grade level. But they are included in passing. According to the state, they are included in passing. Um since my concern, like charts that we got in small groups, and I appreciate you having the small group with me yesterday. You know, we're very well-prepared, but some of the charts and graphs that we saw yesterday in the small group are not displayed for the general public today. So I do want to talk a little bit about those. That's, and looking at grade-three reading, this is the charts y'all gave us yesterday. I'm not going to call out individual schools, but the did not pass for grade-three reading would be, and these were the beginning learners. Um and I'll go to the retest data. Thirty-six percent, forty-three percent, forty-two percent, forty-three percent, thirty-eight, forty-five, thirty-five, forty-seven, forty-three, forty-eight, forty-two, excuse me, forty-eight, thirty-eight, and forty-two percent. Those are the the numbers, or excuse me, the forty-two percent, that was district-wide. We have forty-two percent district-wide of our students in third-grade reading did not pass. Is that correct? Okay, and included in the fifty-eight percent, we, I don't have that data directly in front of me. That would also include the developing learners that are below grade level. Do we, does anybody know what that district-wide number is? Okay. Okay, so it's just a binary state, pass or nothing. Okay, um is that the reading for all levels, for the fifth grade as well? All right, um looking at the grade-five math, there is a breakdown in the one, two, three, and four levels. So we have the beginning, the developing, the um proficient and distinguished. Are we on the same this chart? So again, at at the school levels for math, including retest, we have a sixteen percent did not pass, forty-six, forty-six, sixteen, forty-two, twenty-four, twenty-four, fifty, thirty-five, forty-seven, forty-six, with the district-wide did not pass of thirty-seven. Is that correct? Let's look at the district-wide of the, that would be sixty-three percent that passed, forty-four percent are still developing, correct? So we have eighty, eighty-one percent of our students in math at the fifth grade level or below grade level. Am I correct about that? But I didn't break out my calculator, but forty-four and thirty-seven. But I didn't break out my calculator, but 44 and 37. Is that, is that 81? So we have 14% that are proficient and 5% that are distinguished. So the question becomes, I mean, that to me, those are, those are not impressive numbers. And I know this is not your fault, but there need to be intensive interventions that take place to get these students up to grade level. We have 37% that failed at the fifth grade level in math and 81% that are below grade level. What intensive interventions, what redirection is occurring at the school level to make sure that these students are brought up to speed and gotten on to grade level so that they can see, can succeed at the next, when they reach middle school?
Nadine, I'm going to ask you to take the podium into the microphone for the viewing audience.
Okay. One of the things that we did address in our small group is that our first thing was we acknowledge that math is an area of concern and it is an opportunity for growth for us. We talked about the Georgia, the new standards that were rolled out for math this year. And as a result of the rolling out of the new standards, one of the things that we are working on is to provide intensive professional development for our teachers on the new standards and on our math resources. We collaborate with teaching and learning. One of the things that we're doing differently this year is to also make sure that the rollout of the professional learning is inclusive of our administrators as well. It's very important that if we are putting new standards, we're putting new strategies and new resources in front of our teachers, that our principals and our assistant principals, our district coaches, assistant superintendents are also knowledgeable on what is expected when we visit classrooms. As Dr. McLean shared, and I believe my other colleague shared as well, we do have our intervention blocks that are embedded. We use the start, the STAR data, we use other assessments to be able to determine where our kids are. We look at those instructional planning reports and we use them to create our groups for our intervention and enrichment. So we're doing a couple of things at the same time. We are balancing, making sure that we have a rollout and that we are providing professional development for our teachers and our administrators, our coaches. But then we're also making sure that our interventions are ongoing. Those intervention groups are fluid. They don't stay that way throughout the entire school year. We intervene, we give our instruction, we assess, we make a determination whether or not our kids are performing based on that assessment. And then we go ahead and we regroup again. So we are working intensively. That is our plan to be able to ensure. Again, we understand that our students have some growth areas. Our teachers have some development areas in which we need to work on to be able to ensure success for students. But we are working daily to provide that solid tier one instruction and our tier two interventions for our students.
I have a follow up. You said that the standards have changed, but the, the standards changed this year. These are not tests based on. So the, the STAR data, that's I gathered from yesterday's meeting that STAR data is collected throughout the year. The, the students are assessed throughout the year.
Correct.
And did I also hear that the STAR data is a decent predictor of what is going to occur on the milestones? So.
For some schools, for, for the majority, and it fluctuates from time to time. Some grade levels, there are some schools that will show success. In one particular grade level, it is a good predictor in one grade level. But then there are other grade levels where it may not be a good predictor. But once we have that STAR data, we do respond in time to that data. That's why it's so very important. We've always done that. We, once our students sit for that assessment, our principals and our teachers are analyzing quickly so that we can then make the adjustments that are needed to support students.
With those adjustments, we still have 81% in math that are below grade level. So what is going to be the adjustment to the adjustments for this school year to ensure that we do a heck of a lot better on our milestones for the 2023, 2024 school year?
One of the adjustments that we had to do is our principals had to take a look at whether or not we had teachers who were able to develop or to teach the content the way that it needs, needs to be taught for our students. And in looking at their data, made the decision to then self contain classes, meaning we're not, I don't have a fifth grade teacher who is responsible for the entire grade level for teaching math. Where there was success in some schools, they were able to do that. But a lot of the schools rolled back to make sure that we have an opportunity to provide professional development for all teachers this year around math content. So we don't want to have a situation where we have a teacher who has 40% proficiency. And then you have someone who has 20% proficiency. And because we have a 40% proficiency educator, we go with that educator who is responsible for the math content. It's best for us to be able to provide professional development for all of our teachers to be able to get our teachers acclimated around the new standards. Yes, the new standards that are here this year. But we are working with our teaching and learning departments to make sure that our teachers have that as well as we are doing our interventions blocks. Our interventions have started. From week two, our schools have started to do interventions to support our students during the embedded school day. And as we shared with you all in the small group, we do plan to begin our after school and our Saturday school tutorials in September or October.
What's the expected participation for the after school and Saturday tutorials?
It's on a school by school basis. They determine the students based on the data from the STAR.
So the question is going to be the students that are most in need would be the ones in after school and Saturday school. I don't know about their parental involvement. I have an assumption that I'm not going to say, but how are we going to ensure that these students have transportation after school and have transportation to.
We provide transportation.
That will be provided.
And it has been.
Excellent.
Let me, if I may, I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
You finished?
For the time being.
Okay.
You might need to go.
You need to go. No, I mean, I just want to follow up on something Justin asked. When we came out of, right after we came out of the pandemic, the assumption was that reading was going to be a major area of concern, but worldwide, and I mean worldwide, math was a struggle for all students internationally. With that said, what is it looking like across the board, not just in Rottier County as we see the numbers?
Um, they are the same way. And I will say this, Dr. McLean and I, when we were looking at our data, and I can probably, and I can give you specifics after. But one of the things we looked at, we, we were trying to figure out when we see, because normally you don't see every single school have such a regression in a content area. And you begin to wonder what is it that is causing that? And we went out and started looking at the state reports for the other districts. And one of the things that we did notice when we did, did that, even the schools districts such as Cobb County, which is the school district that had the top performance, they had that regression in the math as well. So while it's not an excuse, it does give us an opportunity to say, okay, well, there is something that is happening in math. So this is an opportunity for us to use the new standards to develop our teachers and then just make sure that the interventions that we have in place, we are targeting students. One of the things that I cannot stress enough that I think is a strength of Rottier County Public Schools is that we take the time to intervene for students during the school day. While we may have Saturday and after school and it is for a a smaller number of students, we are intervening in the school day. And that intervention is targeted, it is ongoing. And we are working every single day to make sure that when we intervene and we assess if it is not working, we go back to the drawing.
And, and it's not a, it's not a, um, it's not a, a place in the blame in any particular direction. That's why I gave my preference with. I did watch those numbers and I knew, I know for a fact that math was that issue. I wanted to ask a question about, you referenced the scores were compared to the cohorts. What cohorts are you speaking of? Are you speaking of kids just in Rottier County? Or are you looking at those seventh graders or eighth graders across the state? So where are we, who are we comparing our data to when we talk about cohorts?
When I speak of cohort, I spoke of, I looked at the district where we were. So I wanted to make sure we're improving our students as, while they're with us. I looked at our sixth graders or seventh graders in middle school, because that's when we've been able to unpack them. Then I looked at our seventh graders to eighth graders in middle school who are now ninth graders. So that's the cohort data I did. I did it by school as well. So I've worked with the principals about are your students, I did it by school and by district to make sure we're moving our students. As comparison to other similar demographics, we know we're in M Risa, but there's some that are closer that are not in Risa collectively as middle schools. We were doing just as well, if not better than the ones that are similar to us. Actually, the ones that are similar, we were doing better to them at the middle school level. But I did not look cohort for this at the state level. No, man.
Okay, I just wanted the clarification on that. I do have additional questions, but I will go ahead and.
And it was to piggyback off your initial question, Heather, about a global trend downward. And I, I get that, but how is Rottier County in math and reading? How are we comparing to metro, to the other districts in metro Risa?
I can answer since I'm here. So within Risa, we were with similar demographics, the schools that are similar to us and close to us that are surrounding and adjacent at the middle school level. We collectively, because you have to look at all four. Well, you look at the math, reading, E L A, science, socials collectively, we did better at the middle school level collectively. But as far as in Risa, there, there were places that outperformed as well. We even had an instance where we were outperforming Gwinnett, which is not similar demographic. And then at one time we were in eighth grade, close to even Marietta at that time, which is not similar to our demographic. But when I look at surrounding counties that are close to us with that data, just to make sure, I want to make sure we're not an outlier. I wanted to make sure we're making improvements. I wanted to make sure that we were striving to do our best as well as we have a long way to go. But I did look at that information.
And if I may interject, I, I have made available to our board our performance on all of those areas within the context of metro Risa, which are 13 metropolitan Atlanta school districts plus two south metropolitan Atlanta school districts, which are Henry and Newton. And consistently we outperformed in all of these areas that we're referencing now and unpacking. We outperformed, and, and I don't, I'm sharing with you the metro Risa, which are 13 districts. I'm currently the chair of metro Risa. So we meet regularly and we talk about our data collectively. That's why that's very, very important. And, and then of course, we also include the two proximate districts. I don't speak in public domains about a specific districts because I don't want to be accused. But this data is available to our board and so that they can see and know how we're performing in a comparative context. And I said this in the small group, non quorum board briefings to those board members who avail themselves of the small group board briefing, that absent a regional comparative context, we can't fully appreciate the data and our students' growth. And I think that's very, very important. And I know Justin knows that comparative data is due all our board members because they have that data. And I want the public to understand and to know that. But the purpose in this meeting is not for me to seem as if I'm comparing to other districts and disparaging other districts because all districts throughout metropolitan Risa, and that's all 13 plus the two south metropolitan districts, have tremendous areas for growth in math and reading, and that's the reality. So for the, the individuals who would be looking on, who rightly, and I'm happy that are concerned about our achievement data, I think it's important for them to understand that regional comparative context as well. And the other thing I would say is that the data is readily accessible to all who is interested in looking at it because it's publicly available by statute. It's publicly available. And you can go, and this is something else I would say, you know, often we get open records requests for data. We don't have to provide data that is otherwise readily accessible like milestones data. You can go and you can just gorge out on the data at the D O E website. And I encourage those who are interested in doing that to look at the regional comparisons, right? So that we have a fuller appreciation. Another thing that's important for me, and I'm passionate about this. No one is going to ever accuse me of the principal or as an assistant superintendent or as a superintendent of not being competitive with data. But our students are more than a number. And they certainly are more than a number that they get on an annual basis, right? And so our, the centerpiece of our district strategic plan is continuous improvement. Are we better tomorrow than we were today? Are we better today than we were yesterday? And we know that we won't see the same level of continuous improvement every year in every content area, but that remains our focus. And so while we've talked about the areas where we need and must and will improve, we've also highlighted the areas where we have improved. And so the improvement has to take place before we get to the level of saying, where do we stand at the Risa level, the regional level? Or the state level? And so that's very, very important. And so continuous improvement is the focus. I will not disparage students' growth, however small or however great, because the journey of a thousand miles begins with a single step, right? And that's the focus and that's our daily focus. And we're going to praise any and all gains and achievement, whether it's 1%, whether it's 6%, whether it's 8%. And we're going to work like the dickens and focus in on the areas where we may have regressed, as, as has been the case regionally, statewide and internationally, when you look at math. So that's the, that's the point that I want us to focus on. So with respect to the data, anyone who's interested in seeing it, down to the most granular detail, it's readily available to you as it is each of these board members on this dais. And I encourage you to look at it if you wish to do that. The purpose of an overview presentation would not be to go in the most granular detail of all of that data. But rather, I do want you to know where you can access that data. But we wanted to share with you areas where we need, we have more improvement to make and areas where we did see some improvement. And yes, areas where we told you we exceeded the Risa and the state without name dropping specific districts, but it's readily accessible to anyone who's interested in seeing that information.
I, I want to continue.
Sure.
Ladies, thank you so much for the small, small board meet, group meeting. It was very informative. And I do believe that you guys are all working very hard. My, the purpose of my question is always to make sure that if we are, if there are in fact gaps, that we are filling those gaps. If there are ways that we can support, if we can allocate more resources. Those, that's the purpose of my question. And with that, I have a question for the elementary level. And this might bring in Shirley a little bit. We, we use some COVID funds to, to bring Kumon on board to, to assist with both math and reading. Correct? It was just math and reading? Okay, and so my question, did you guys see any improvement from, with those students? How, you know, do we drill all the way down into that kind of data to see that the partnerships that we're bringing on board, the programs that we're putting into play, whether it's read 180, if everything is working, or do we need to revisit some of those programs and bring something in? Because we certainly, me, I know that the budget that we put together is to make sure that we are providing you guys with everything you need as principals, as teachers, as support, your support staff. So what else can we do? Because we don't want to keep hearing these numbers. So do you know if those things helped? Or do we need to take another approach at the elementary level?
Oh Shirley, I would, I know that Megan, I don't think Megan is here, but I know that we collected the data to Heather's specific point about the Kumon intervention. We collected the data of those students who were involved in that program. And also grade level wise, surely were those students, most of those students in the Kumon intervention were, were not grade tested grade level students, Chris? Yeah, the first, second grade, that type of thing.
And so basically the impact, the greater impact could be felt later on because most of our students were first and second graders. Thank you for that clarification. And one last question, ladies. Um, can you expound on retesting so everybody understands that it is not something that we just select the students and retest why we should see a difference? So go.
Hey, if you'll step to the podium so we can hear.
At the middle school level, we retest in the, uh, eighth grade. So it's in reading and in math, only at the eighth grade level do we retest. And at elementary.
But it is not selected by us.
No ma'am, it's not selected by us. The state only allows us to test in the eighth grade level for reading and math. And those who perform at level one are those who are allowed to retest. So if you were proficient, you can't get a higher score. It's only those who are in level one are allowed to retest.
Okay.
And at the elementary level, we, we retest in third grade and fifth grade for reading for those students who are not reading on, at the, on or above level. And for fifth grade, we retest for math for our level one students.
I have a question, um, for anyone who would like to answer it. So my voice is doing this weird thing right now, so I'll try to be as clear as possible. I know that throughout the year, you all have been progress monitoring, right? So were these schools a surprise to you? Because I know that you've been providing tutoring, you've shared information about reading recovery. And then as Heather said, you talked about, um, um, Kumon, talk about losing star, going track progress along the way. Were the, were these end results a surprise?
I'm sorry. I said for us, it was, um, we had some surprises. Um, STAR is a great indicator, but we, we had some places where, where STAR reading and math wasn't aligned to what we saw. So we already unpacked the why, trying to figure out the why. Um, and then when it, um, two other areas we looked at, we thought we would have done better. Um, looking at C U A common assessment, we progress monitor every month, all of us meeting with our schools, look at data. Um, and it was a surprise. So we've already met with teaching and learning, the principals to really unpack why it didn't, that students didn't perform as well as expected. And so it's by school, it looks different, um, or why did it really align? But there were some surprises, uh, to be quite honest, um, because we were anticipating in certain areas to be much, to be stronger. Um, but STAR for reading and math, for the majority of the schools, it was a good indicator. The schools usually outperform, but we had some outliers as well. And we've already begun to unpack the why behind that for middle school. I'm only speaking to.
Elementary.
The same for elementary, um, when it comes to STAR. But when you talk about progress monitoring, we do look at the STAR data. But one of the things, not only are our schools looking at the performance band, they're also looking at the scale score. So I may have a student who is in level one, the beginning learner. We're also looking to see if that, is that scale score growing? So they may not have made it to developing yet, but we're tracking that growth as well. Um, so really not a surprise, but just know that we are looking at the data, we're looking at the standards. We're, um, intervening so that we can make sure that we are providing the instruction that our students need.
And if I may, uh, as you take the podium, Shirley, this is, I think this is a great opportunity to really bring it home in terms of the intersection between our, our continuous improvement with respect to achievement and the role of the board, right? The, we have all of the people that we need to do the work that you have described that need, that is being done now to address the achievement, uh, to accelerate the achievement gains, to address any, uh, gaps or any regression. The board's role is to determine whether or not there are policy implications for achievement and to make sure that any potential policy gaps are closed. Also would be the board's responsibility to take a look at, uh, the, the programs that it would support or not as part of our budget to address these issues with respect to students. So what I'm doing is just bringing it back home in terms of where, where are the parameters for the board to potentially be impactful in doing its part in supporting our improvement, continuous school improvement efforts. And it would be with respect to any policy implications or with respect to budget, which is a vehicle for making sure that we have the resources that we need. And so I think it's a great opportunity for all board members, who I certainly would presume are very interested in seeing the numbers that need to improve and prove, to be self-reflective about how, what, how they have, uh, leveraged their, uh, impact, right? To impact this. So when we talk about Read 180, when we talk about tutor.com, when we talk about, uh, all of these interventions that are designed to address students' needs, we have those things because we have a budget, right? And so it's going to be very, very important for us to take a look at that. And so I'm excited because I'm reading a book right now that I'm going to offer to our board, uh, um, that really focuses on how the board can maximize its role with respect to achievement. And it really talks about what is the optimal role for the board within policy to impact achievement. And I think this is a great opportunity that we're opening now. Where none of us are playing a game of gotcha, I certainly hope not. Because to, because we can't play gotcha because this is all, we're all in this together, right? We're all in this together. So we're not litigating students' achievement. We're speaking honestly to the gains, the gaps and the regression. And we're going to collectively say, what can we do to support what you do every day to make sure that this data improves? And we're going to look in the mirror and say, what are we doing or not doing as a governance team to make sure that you have the resources that you need to do what we are saying we want you to do, which is to improve these scores, right? So, thank you.
So can I add, um, I have one thing that I want to say before we end this session of going to, uh, recess. First, I want to say to our students, thank you. Thank you for, for all of your hard work and know that we are here for you. I am championing for you for sure, and I believe that your board members are as well. So if you're out there, if your parents are watching tonight, please know that your Rockdale County Board of Education, board members, especially your board chair, is championing for you. And we know that is hard, but we know that you're up for the challenge. For our staff members, for our, our teachers, for our principals, our education leaders. I also want to just say to you, thank you. Thank you for your hard work. I know that your work is not done. I know that you got a big challenge before you, but know that we are here for you. And that's why we ask these questions so that we can see what can we do to make sure that you have all of the resources you need to have an impact. And, um, as you shared with us today, there were some areas that we did make growth. Uh, there were some areas where we do have, um, more opportunities for improvement. And I really like the fact that we are focusing on continuous improvement. Know that, oh, Rockdale County is one of the leaders in that. And know also too, that I work for Southern Company. That's our mission today as well. So continuous improvement, we can all focus on that. Let's move forward and do that. If anyone else have any more questions, you can submit those questions to Rockdale County, uh, Board of Education or to Dr. Oates and his staff, and someone will get back with you. At this time, it is eight eighteen and we're going to take a recess. Thank you.
So, um, Ms. Brown, would Ms. Freeman get to share, Ms. Brown? Were there any surprises at the high school level? Because that was my question. And I would like to say this, as an elected official, I think that we should be asking the questions that the public want answers to. Yes, we support our children. I'm currently an educator. I would tell anyone, it is one of the hardest jobs at this particular time. Being an educator is very challenging, but we have to have these discussions. We have to look at where we are. We have to look at baseline data. We have to look at where we are going and if we are making the growth. Because if we're at the same place next year this time, then are we going to have that same spiel? But go ahead, go ahead, Dr. Freeman, thank you.
I think her question was, were, were there any surprises at the high, with respect to the high school, you'll see data.
Yes, there were some surprises for us, but I would like to talk about, I know at the high school level, sometimes it's student effort. And when we're taking the STAR and those sorts of things, we have to continue to encourage them, please try. And so that our data is really valid. And then when we look at our E O Cs too, sometimes our, our students suffer from test fatigue and that sort of thing. So that, I think that's when the surprises come in.
I, I remember, I'll share this to, to Ms. Jones's question. Dr. Freeman, you mentioned in the small group board briefing that, uh, you, you cited that there were a certain number of writing that was left blank.
Yes, sir.
And what, I, I think.
Yes, yes. And so in narrative writing, I looked at us as a district, ninety-nine students submitted blank documents. They didn't write at all. In extended writing, twenty-six students left that area blank. And so what I'm challenging our, uh, administrators and teachers, uh, with is not talking about the content of the, the writing portion, but the why behind it was left blank. And so, uh, we'll be working on that.
I do have a question before we recess, um, Madam Chair. It's, it's something that is more comprehensive. As you guys go into, um, putting this together, the, um, what's some, what are some of the challenges that you think you're going to face, especially with the Saturday schools, the after schools? What are some of those challenges, especially with the older children?
Yes, it's inspiring them to take advantage of it. And we try to incentivize things, you know, we want it to be intrinsic. But realistically, you have a ways to go to get there. So we try to give them extrinsic, uh, rewards for attending, recognition, uh, posting it on the walls, those sorts of things before we get to the intrinsic level. I think teenagers, uh, there's a lot of stimuli out there, much more so than when I was in high school. And just making school engaging and fun. Um, I think this group of teenagers have more tests, even though the state reduced the test about three years ago. I know some of the things they're doing now, I wouldn't have been able to do in the eleventh grade high school. I know that we were able to have assemblies and talk about leadership and character and give them opportunities to leave the classroom and experience field trips and excursions that enhance the learning. And now I think we're heavier on the, you are a product, not a person.
And you say, and you see the same thing with the middle school levels, Kim?
Definitely see that as a challenge for us, um, engaging them, uh, you know, after school or Saturday school. But we make sure it is in the day so that every student has the ability to participate in that. And also reteaching it in a different manner, engaging, seeing their learning style, seeing what they're interested in. And middle school is just, we have also a social emotional. I have to, I cannot say that that won't be a challenge. If they come to school and they have other things that are pressing, making sure we're doing classroom guidance, making sure we're looking at our data to see what is really pressing our middle schoolers, making sure we're responsive and creating a community of trust in our schools as well.
Because it is important to look at the whole child, huh?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And elementary, what are your challenges? And, and again, I always preface with, um, my mind work as what can we do? How can we bring in the external resources? How can we collaborate with our community? I think that's one of the greatest things about Rockdale is that we partner and make it happen, but we got to communicate in order for it to happen.
So for us, um, historically, we have better attendance in the fall. Um, simply because our, you know, parents, it's, it's very fresh. And, and so we tend to have a lot of, um, fresh students back from the break, fresh teachers back from the break. Um, but our teachers work hard. They, it's, they put a lot of sweat equity every single day. And so when we do provide opportunities for our students to begin in January, that's when the challenge begins. Because we tend to find there is some level of, um, our students are not attending, even though we do provide bus, uh, opportunities for our, uh, students, they're not attending. And then spring, when it, it becomes, uh, different, uh, athletic seasons and balls, uh, games, it becomes very difficult because sometimes our families are participating. And of course, we know that sports is, is good for our students to be a part of those, um, uh, extracurricular activities. So it just becomes harder for us in the second semester with our teachers as well, because we do have a little bit of, um, burnout at that time. And so, um, it, it's just, um, we get that participation in the fall and everyone's gung ho, but it does decline, um, during the spring.
I have a really quick question. Um, you said that the students that are testing at a level one are allowed to retake. Is that allowed or is it mandated? Like, is it optional to retake or we actually are making them retake it?
It's not optional.
So with all levels, middle school, high school, it's fair.
All right. Any more questions before we go to recess? All right, recess is. All right, recess is.
It is now eight thirty and we are calling session, general session back to order. Mr. Hall, Dr. Back have uploaded financial and student enrollment information. Please review this important information. And the board has reviewed the minutes for all board meetings held in July. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for all the board meetings held in July?
So moved. Second, Akita Palmer.
A motion to approve the July board meetings minutes has been presented and made by Ms. Duncan, seconded by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. So you want to click, okay, Mr. Hall, you have a presentation for us tonight?
I do. I will be going over the final financial numbers for FY twenty-three as well as the first financial report for FY twenty-four. The final numbers for June, fourteen billion revenue for June, one hundred ninety-one point one million year to date, which was one hundred and five point six percent of our budget. Last year, we received thirteen point six million in June, one hundred eighty-seven point four million year to date, which was one hundred nine point four percent of our budget. Expenditures, twenty-one point four million for June, one hundred ninety-four point two year to date, which is one hundred and five point three percent of our budget. Last year, we received eighteen point one, expended eighteen point one million in June, one hundred and seventy-eight point four million, which is one hundred and forty, one hundred and four point one percent of our budget. Just a quick note on, I did put some notes to your financials in there for you to look at, to explain some things, but a couple of reasons we were over so high on expenses was the health insurance increase that came on us at mid-year. That was about four point five million. We had a grant for buses about seven hundred and four thousand. So those were the two biggies right there. Our fund balance at the end of the year was thirty-one point four million approximately. Last June, we were at thirty-four point six. We did budget three and a half million in fund balance. We came in at about three point two million. So we we're bet, we're we're good, better off on our fund balance use, only three point two instead of three point five, which was good. After all the expenses they put on us, we were still able to maintain right there. So that was, that was. All right, our balance sheet, cash, our assets are fifty-six point five billion approximately, our liabilities twenty-five million approximately, twenty million of that is our salary accruals. And the rest of that is our third-party payments. And there's our fund balance at thirty-one point five approximately. Spotify, Spotify collections are ongoing and will be completed at the end of September twenty twenty-three. Revenue received so far is ninety-eight point four million. Expenses eighty-one million and the current balance is Spotify to seventeen point four million. Any questions on June before I jump into July?
Oh, seven.
All right. Our first report for the for the year FY twenty-four. Our revenue for the month of July is nine million, year-to-date nine million, which is four point five percent of our budget. Last July, we were at eight point four million, which was four point six percent of our budget. Spending interest through July seventeen point one million, which is eight point three percent of our budget. Last, last year in July, we were fifteen point two, which was eight point two percent of our budget. Our opening conferences end of July, one hundred, one million, six hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. Our fund balance at the end of July is approximately twenty-three point five million. And last July, we were at twenty-seven point eight. Our assets, forty-three point eight million approximately, liability is twenty point four million. That's still our accruals right there that will be zeroed out next month. And then our fund balance at twenty-three point four million. I do have one action item with our fundraisers. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve all fundraiser requests submitted by each school for the first semester of school year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four as presented. The recommendations are in compliance with board regulation, regulation JKSR. All I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Keith.
Keith, can I have a quick question regarding the fundraisers? For the ones that are turned in ahead of time that we are about to approve, does that include our PTOs and PTAs and and different entities within the building that are under different five oh one C three status?
No.
Thank you. Because we're trying to put our budgets together for those entities. Perfect.
Okay, Dr. Ose, do you have any updates?
Yes, I just want to say this has been a very, very busy week of community engagement. For me, in my role as superintendent with the school district, I had the privilege by way of invitation to address the Progressive Club this week as well as the Rockdale Rotary Club. And also had the privilege in-house of addressing our new two thousand twenty-three Real Academy cohort participants. So it's always good to be able to get out. And we we've been talking about the very thing that we talked about tonight, there is where we've made some gains and some continuous improvement and there is where we still have some improvement to make. And so I'm very excited about that. Also, probably the highlight of the week was surprising. We had some of our board members who were available to join me and some of my executive cabinet members to surprise our three Teacher of the Year finalists for this year. And that's Dr. Dr. Christie Davis Langston at Flatshow's Elementary School, Ms. Jasmine Bithia at Edwards Middle School, and Ms. Roseda Hardaway at Rockdale Career Academy. So congratulations to those three ladies on being named Teacher of the Year finalists for Rockdale County Public Schools. And we look forward to formally celebrating all of our Teacher of the Year, Teachers of the Year for our schools in the district. That's on September twenty-sixth from five to eight PM at Rockdale Career Academy, in which time our district's Teacher of the Year will be named. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. There is no old business, but there is new business. Mr. Hall has provided the recommendation and rationale for the semester fundraising requests. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve all fundraiser requests submitted by each school for the first semester of twenty twenty-three, twenty-four presented?
So moved Sandra Jackson Lett, second Heather.
A motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation as presented has been made by Ms. Jackson Lett and seconded by Ms. Duncan. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Last week, the cabinet provided an extensive overview of all action items and the board voted to place the action items on a consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the action items under the consent agenda?
So moved. Second, Akita Palmer.
A motion to approve the action items under the consent agenda has been made by Ms. Duncan and seconded by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. There is no board discussion. Do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting?
So moved.
All right, all right. A motion has been made by Ms. Duncan and seconded by Ms. North. The meeting is concluded at eight thirty-nine. Good night, everyone. I mean, all in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.